...website. Reporting in Westminster, I'm Jacqueline Twague.
On April thirtieth nineteen seventy-five, the war changed when Saigon fell to communist force. Great men and women fought and died for democracy.
This marks the fiftieth anniversary of when the North Vietnamese forces captured Saigon, ending the Vietnam War. And Westminster became home for many of these Vietnamese refugees.
It is more than significant than any other areas that we have forty-three percent of the Vietnamese community here. And this is the name of Little Saigon, which is, you know, we take the communist, the name of Saigon away, then we are making it a Little Saigon here. And I know that there are many, many of the people who were...
No.
No. So we go, um, Commissioner Anderson, Commissioner Tran, Commissioner Nguyen, Vice Chair Wolbert, Chair Hua. And then he does the salute to flag. So the only thing he'll do here is just fill out the time that he reads into a record that the meeting started, because you need that for the minutes. Um, he'll do the salute to flag, um...
What time do you use, is there a time? Oh, right.
Well, there's that, there's, they use that clock. So when, I forgot to tell you, when you do set up, um, just make sure that that clock is correct, because that's the one they go off with to, um, to call the meeting to order and to, um, adjourn the meeting.
Okay.
Or if they take any breaks or anything.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, so I just kind of follow along.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so he'll ask, you know, Planning Secretary, uh, did we receive any late communications? Um, and I just say, Chair, I have nothing to report, or I have, um, whether any late communications. See for council, they ask, um, they'll say, you know, city clerks report, and then I say, I have nothing to report, and there's nothing to report. But here, this is like if you received any, you received any comments late, if there was an error on, like, one of the items within the staff report, you'll report out. And if you ever need help with, you can come, you know, I'll pull something from one of the councils, is how I usually do it.
Okay.
You'll just say, uh, you know, Chair, um, I'm, um, I'm trying to place up the dials, placed in the lobby for public view and on the website.
We heard.
Yeah. Yeah. If they find an error, they're going to, you know, the mayor's needs to see what they have to do. The mayor's needs to see what they have to discuss, make a decision. And I'll tell you, but it's kind of, it's kind of like a memo. So I just put there, either if there's nobody, I put there no members of the public in attendance wishing to speak, or, uh, Chair, you have however many speakers, you know, we actually like to let them, especially if they're, you know, we have one speaker, we have five speakers, um, just like, you know, just like, um, maybe like two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten.
So only three of us.
Good evening and welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Planning Commission of the City of Westminster. It's December third twenty twenty-five. If you could please call roll.
Chair Hamadi, Vice Chair Wolbert.
Here.
Commissioner Anderson.
Here.
Commissioner Tran. Commissioner Nguyen. Vice Chair, you have a quorum with Chair Hamadi and Commissioner Tran absent.
Thank you very much. All right, now it's time to salute the flag. If you wouldn't mind, stand with me, place your hand, right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, you may be seated. Item number three tonight is a report from the Planning Commission Secretary on any late communication items.
I have nothing to report.
Thank you much. Item four, ex parte communications. This section is intended to allow all officials the opportunity to reveal any disclosures regarding site visits or ex parte communications about the public hearing and regular business items. Anything from, uh, any commissioners tonight? None from me either. We'll move on to item number five, no special presentations, I imagine. We'll go on to item number six, oral communications. This is the time of the meeting that the members of the public may address the Planning Commission on matters of public interest, which pertain to the city and are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. Members of the public wishing to address the public hearing items shall do so at the time of the public hearing. Unless extended by a majority vote of the Planning Commission, comment shall be limited to three minutes per speaker. To address the Planning Commission, please complete a blue request to speak form that is provided at the entrance to the council chambers and submit the form to the Planning Commission clerk when your name is called. Please step to the podium at that time, state your name and city of residence for the record. Those are both optional. Uh, any public hearing or any, uh, oral communications tonight?
Vice Chair, I have no members of the public wishing to speak.
All right, thank you much. We'll close oral communications. It looks like we don't have any approval of minutes on item number seven. Uh, item number eight, it looks like we don't have any public hearings either. Any regular business to report tonight? Seems like there's none. Any reports from staff or any of the Planning Commission? I know item number eleven, we have matters from staff. We're going to get some updates, uh, from staff regarding development projects within the city.
All right, thank you Vice Chair Wolbert, Ken Fickelman, Principal Planner for the city. I did want to point out that we do have minutes that will be ready to prove for the next meeting. We weren't sure if we were going to have an item for this meeting, so rather than put them on the agenda this time, they got bumped to the next one, but we will have sets of the meeting minutes for you at the next meeting. So what we wanted to do today is give you a little glimpse into what projects will be coming for the city that are working their way through planning at this time. It's important to note, these won't all be heard by the Planning Commission, but we still want to keep you abreast of the kind of projects that we're getting in this city and the kind of projects that, uh, we expect to see a lot more of in the coming years. So we've got a map, just so you can kind of visualize where exactly these are. I know it's small, but it was the only way to fit them in. Kind of divided onto the west side. This first map is going to show Westminster across the top third of the screen and the four oh five going across. Uh, so we'll kind of work our way around that way. So the first bigger project...
Can, can I just, I'm going to give a caution to the commission that this is being provided for information purposes only. It's not for discussion among the, um, Planning Commissioners, as that would require noticed hearings.
So we can answer factual questions you may have about the projects, we just can't dispute the merits of the project. So the first one we have is a project that was submitted for sixty-eight townhome units and four ADUs on the former Big Lot site that is over on Westminster, right up almost against the four oh five freeway. The applicant is looking to do sixty-eight attached townhomes and four affordable ADUs. They are using density bonus law, um, for that project. That one will be heard by the Planning Commission. That was, that will be a tentative tract map and development review. Uh, that one was just deemed complete about a week ago. So it's early in the stage and we're still, we haven't even provided initial comments back to that applicant at this time. Right below that, almost across the street diagonally, is a case that was recently approved. That's for an Iona rechargeery, I've mentioned that before. Uh, they did break ground earlier this week. Um, they are still awaiting building permits, but they do have their grading permit, so we will see activity on that site fairly quickly. Uh, they're working on a fairly aggressive, uh, timeline to get that built and in place. Iona is a kind of new player in the electric car recharging field, but they do have some heavyweight names behind them. There's eight major carmakers that have backed the brand, including Ford, BMW, Mercedes, Honda, so they, they do have some brands, some cachet behind them, and they are looking to expand across the country. Uh, what's different about them is rather than just put in charging stations, they have an amenity building. So this one, it gives you, this one is just going to be vending machines. They have said the place does well, they may change that. Some of them have restaurants, some of them have coffee shops, but it gives the people charging their cars a place to go and sit and not have to sit in their car while they charge their cars.
Ken, Ken, so, so what, what's going to be there in addition to the charging? Is there, there'll be something there?
There's a, it's, they call it an amenity building. So this one will be, uh, you'll need a code to get in, which you'll have if you're charging, it'll give you access. And this one's just going to have some chairs, some, like, some seating and some vending machines.
Okay.
Just somewhere where you can sit inside rather than sit in your car while you charge. So down across from there to the south on the four oh five, there is another case. This is a tentative tract map, so this one will also be heard by the Planning Commission. It is for sixty-eight single-family residences, uh, that's using density bonus to get to that. These will be small lot, um, single-family homes. They are not attached, they each are on their own lot detached from each other. Uh, there are five affordable units, four of those are done as duplex units, the fifth one is standalone. And twenty-eight of the single-family houses will have ADUs attached to them. Uh, that one, we have provided comments, it's a little farther along, but we're still working with the applicant to make sure they adhere to all city policies. Uh, you will see that one most likely sometime mid next year. Uh, the big one that everybody wants to hear about is, uh, we do have an application for the mall. That was officially submitted almost two weeks ago. Uh, the initial submittal is for twenty-two hundred and fifty units. It's a mix of townhomes and apartments, including two hundred and twenty-eight affordable units. Um, they are keeping a target onsite, it will be moved, it'll be in its own separate building, and it will be a retail component with a hotel. Again, the Planning Commission will hear that, because that will require at least some kind of tentative tract map. That one's very early, we're still getting a handle on everything they've submitted. Uh, I would imagine that one would be seen by Planning Commission possibly next summer. Working our way across town on, uh, seventy-two thirty-one Westminster, so that's kind of over by where the new community garden will be. Uh, that is a three-story mixed use. It's looking to have medical office building or retail on the ground floor and six units on the second and third floor. Uh, that's a development review, that one will not be seen by the commission, but we wanted to highlight it, because that's the type of project we're starting to see more of along the corridors. These smaller residential projects with a mix of apartments and ground floor retailer office. On Golden West, we have fourteen-one-two-five Golden West. That is a partially city-funded, one hundred percent affordable development. It's been kicking around for a while. They had some issues with fire, getting access, ladder access and engine access to make sure that all the units were accessible. They think they have worked that through with OC Fire, so we are expecting a resubmittal soon, uh, because that's one hundred percent affordable, it won't be coming to council or to commission, um, but we're excited for that, because it is a one hundred percent affordable project. Um, over on Beach, this is kind of directly across from the old Sam Ash Building or the new pickleball place. Fourteen-two-forty-one Beach, we have fifteen townhome units, those are going to be three-story units. Uh, as of now, that's just a development review, so it wouldn't come to the commission. Uh, but that one is fairly early in the process, that was submitted just about two months ago. All right, so moving our way east of Beach, um, right across the street almost at kind of the intersection over there where the tire place is, we have two projects there, they are related, because they use a shared parking agreement to provide parking for the office building. On Beach Boulevard, we'll have a four-story office building, um, currently somebody wants to use it as their headquarters building. Uh, that'll have five units on the upper floors, and it will be a development review and lot line adjustment. It'll also have shared parking and a structure that will be built, uh, across the street diagonally, and that will be a four-story, twelve-unit apartment complex with a parking structure. At this time, neither one of those would come to commission, um, but we're excited for those, because it's kind of the first through that Westminster corridor east of Beach that we're hoping will kind of drive development down Nap Street. Um, just to note, this isn't actually a planning case, but the Infinity Dealer down on Beach, just north of the four, or the, yeah, the four oh five, Airstream will be moving on to that facility. So they'll be moving their sales out of Midway City, back into Westminster, uh, they'll be splitting the dealership. We do have building permits that are currently running through the system, uh, but that'll bring retail dollars back to Westminster, and we'll get the tax revenue for those. So I just thought it was important to note that that is also making its way through. Over in Little Saigon on Moran, in, on Bishop, in the Moran Street specific plan, we have a seventeen-unit, four-story townhome project. Those are, we know those are for sale units. That will be a development review and a tentative tract map, so that one will be, that one will be heard by the commission. Uh, commission approved projects, to let you guys know what's going on with some of the projects we've already, that have already made their way through here. Bolsa Row has power, the Edison is giving them the green light, they are waiting final inspections. Uh, the next steps would be the individual tenant improvements for the tenant spaces. We do know there is one ready to go, but they need to get a final inspection on the shell itself before they can move forward with the building permit check for those. Uh, the Articraft Warehouse that was approved a few months ago, that was appealed, um, there was a hearing scheduled in November. We got last minute communication from the appellant that we could not answer. They basically, it was the day after Veterans Day, they emailed us on Veterans Day with some extra such studies. We had no way to rebut those before a meeting, they, they are going to take an actual environmental firm to look at. Um, so we pushed the hearing back to the tenth, and we will be asking for a continuance on that.
Articraft was over, uh, Bolsa?
Golden West Circle.
Golden West Circle.
Yeah, see, it was the big warehouse building where they're also going to sell cabinets, things like that. Um, all the recommended zoning text amendments that were, the, the commission recommended approval of have been approved by council. We'll take the last two of those on the tenth, that'll be the call for review and the density bonus text amendments. Um, so those will go for first reading next Wednesday on the tenth. So with that, that's all that staff has. We are open to answering any questions we can about the projects, or about any other development or issues you have seen the city that you want to talk about. Any questions?
So what's the, uh, I had heard that demolition may start over at the mall in December, and then I heard that it may be not in December, maybe March. Have you heard anything?
They do have a permit in for the demolition of the mall, the main building itself. There's no, it will not be done by December, uh, because it's still working its way through the building plan check process. Uh, but as soon as that is approved, they would be able to start demo. So they haven't given us a date, it's just as far as we know upon approval, and it'll take a little bit of time to get the equipment in place, so, but they are working towards that.
And, and in regards to the mall further, um, I'd noticed there was a, a trucking, commercial trucking facility operating out of the mall, doing something, using it as a staging area or marshaling yard, so is there any update on that?
Code enforcement has looked into it, as far as I know, they've made contact with the business. I don't know the status of that, they usually give whoever is, um, in violation, a few weeks to try to work out what they're doing, but I know that code enforcement has made contact.
Okay, is that something you could just maybe have an update at our next meeting on the mall?
Um, I can, I can try to get an update for you by next week.
And if you don't have the information, that's okay, but you could just check with them, and if you do have something to report, that would be appreciated.
I did check with them last week, towards the end of last week, and that's where, I know they're working towards it, but we don't work, we usually don't file instant cease and desist, so we give them a chance to try to remedy the situation before we just move ahead with any enforcement.
Yeah, you said that they're going to be build a hotel in Westminster Mall?
That is part of the proposal at this point, it is.
Yeah, it's going to be like a three-star, four-star, five-star.
We don't know who the tenant is yet, they, what they, they don't tell us who the tenant is. They tell us that they are building a hotel. Uh, the city won't, isn't usually involved in the actual picking of the tenant, and we don't know at this time who it'd be.
If they build a hotel, it's going to be more people coming.
I noticed over on Garden Grove Boulevard, they finally did demo of that project that we approved, that I think somebody was appealing for Sequa violation. I, I forgot who the applicant was.
That was the Westminster Reliability Project, I believe, the battery storage project?
No.
Oh, this is the warehouse, seventy-four seventy-four Garden Grove Boulevard?
Yes.
Yeah, that one is moving forward, they've got demo permits, I'm not sure if they have building permits yet, um, but they are looking to move forward with the project.
And then the battery storage I saw is also moving forward as well, looks like they have that whole thing fenced off.
Correct, they, um, I've been in contact with somebody about where they can locate their, um, construction shed. So we do know they are moving towards actual building of that site fairly quickly.
And then two more that I have for you, uh, I haven't seen any movement from Enterprise and what's happening over at the old RV place on the twenty-two and Garden Grove. Any updates on Enterprise?
So Enterprise is no longer involved.
Interesting.
We do have a building permit, uh, for, from Tesla. So the building, building permit is to convert the back building, the taller one with, that had the RV, uh, bays in it, into a Tesla facility, and they would convert one of the front buildings into a Tesla sales and delivery center. Uh, that is a use, it, since it's new cars, it's, it's allowed by right, that won't be heard by the commission, they will just go through the building permit process. Uh, but Tesla submitted, actually the same day as Infinity Airstream submitted, I believe that was about three weeks ago.
Okay, so Enterprise just said, no thanks?
I, I don't know what went on behind the scenes, I just know that Enterprise is no longer involved with the project.
All right.
But we do have a project moving forward there, which is what's important.
And I have an oldie but a goodie, and I don't know if you know, but we approved a couple of Dish Network cell towers for cellular service. I haven't seen any of those things installed on the two project locations that we identified. I think Dawn, you were part of at least three of them. Do we have any updates on those conditional use permits for Dish on the Edison Towers?
We do not, and I, since I don't know what you're talking about, I will have to look into it and then get back to you next meeting.
Okay, that'd be, yeah, we approved, there was, I know I was involved in two, Dawn, I think you were involved in three.
For the, the, the cell, the cell antennas?
Up on the Edison Towers, there's one of them over off of Newland and, um, Hyle, and the other one was off of Westminster and, what's that, Hoover? So they were, they had fencing, and there was all kinds of things that we had to do for a conditional use permit, but we haven't seen zero cell, uh, site material being put up, and none of the bricks and mortar that we wanted. site material being put up and none of the bricks and mortar that we wanted near the bottom of the towers. So if we can get an update from Dish and if they're still going to consider doing business in our city or not, that'd just be an interesting one, I think, maybe, you know. Be nice to know.
Yeah. No, I can look into that and especially because you have very, very specific locations, it'll make it a lot easier for me. So I will get you some kind of update at the next meeting.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Well, just, let's see, I guess, the, the project on Beach, the pickleball court. And so are both those facilities open or one is open or what's the?
I'm sorry, which, which?
The pickleball court?
Lavender.
The pickleball is open. In fact, one of the other planners just today said she was curious and walked over and went inside. I, I've been invited over. We just haven't been able to set up a time yet. She said it's really nice inside, that, that was full inside. The parking lot was full, which was, I did notice driving by the other day, which is nice to see. But she said inside, it looks like a really nice facility so far. But they are operational.
And how about lavender?
They're still working. And I do want to, I, I want to clarify something. So I said at the last meeting, the, the license had been transferred. So I wasn't wrong, but I talked to ABC about another project and I just asked them. They will technically transfer a license before they do the background research. So the license was transferred. It doesn't mean it's operable at this time. So they take the license out of the old people, put it into a person's name, and that's when they do the background opera, the background information will check to see if they can actually let them operate with that license. So just because it's been transferred by ABC doesn't mean they can use it, which I didn't know. I had a nice conversation with somebody from ABC the other day and I learned, so I wanted to share with you. Because it was a little unclear after I talked to them. I'm like, okay, that makes more sense.
Okay. And, and before they become operable, will you have an opportunity to walk the facility and compare what the commission approved as far as conditions to ensure they're in compliance with all those conditions?
Yeah, and we'll do a check on the conditions and they'll have to get building permits, which they're running through the process of. So we'll have the building inspectors also checking to make sure that the plans are being followed. Because the plans approved through the building plan check process will be the plans more or less what the commission approved. You know, if they have to make little changes for ADA, we're not going to bring that back to the commission. But it will be more or less what was approved.
Well, hopefully it won't be less. Hopefully at least, it can be more, but, but we wouldn't want to see less.
Well, that's, I mean, what I mean by that is if they need to make like a change to the layout to facilitate ADA that doesn't really change the operation, we're not necessarily going to bring that back. But you know, anything that would affect operations would come back to the commission for reapproval.
So, so if they propose installing a microwave in lieu of a four burner range, that wouldn't be acceptable?
We wouldn't even allow that. We wouldn't bring that back because they do have, they have to have it be a fully functioning restaurant. So we will make sure that the kitchen is what was approved. If they change, if they change out a six burner stove or an eight burner stove.
That's fine, but, but yeah, okay.
Yeah, but all microwaves, we're not going to allow. Maybe all fryers. I, I think that's popular right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. We will move on to item number 12, matters from the Planning Commission, including AB 1234 reports when required. Anything from the commission tonight? All right. I'd just like to say thanks again for putting this information together, Ken. Really appreciate the hard work on it and it's great to know what is coming up in the future. And I'm sure the residents of the city are excited to know about them as well.
And as we get more information on the mall, I will make sure I pass it on to you. But it's, it's just so early. I haven't even had a chance to fully go through the plans.
Can you let us know who the submittal is from?
Submittal? Yeah, that's public information. It is, it's from AO, which is a design firm on behalf of Shopoff.
Shopoff, perfect. All right. If that's it, then we will go to item number 13, adjournment. I want to thank you all for tuning in tonight. The next regular meeting for the Planning Commission will be held Wednesday, December 17th, 2025 at 6:00 PM. Thank you so much. Have a good night.